Yeah.
I was worried.
I was looking at the clock up there.
The clock is never...
Well? Five o'clock, call the meeting to order. Local call please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McAcoran?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here.
We have public comments, but there is no one in the audience. We are going into executive session. There will be public comments at the end of the regular meeting. And, Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have three closed-session items this evening. Two are existing litigation, one for the Airport Authority, the other for the City Council pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1. The parties to the litigation and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. That's Items A and B. And then we have a third anticipated litigation item pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D2. Facts and circumstances pertaining to that anticipated litigation are set forth on the agenda. Basically, it pertains to the reopening of certain pieces of litigation that we thought had been settled at this point. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report that at the conclusion of the closed session or the commencement of the six o'clock meeting.
Right, well, adjourned to executive session. We will meet back here for the regular council meeting at 6:00 P.M. Sorry about that. Called the meeting with the Vicodilla City Council order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Vias? Mayor Protem McAcoran?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. We were at five o'clock. We went into executive session. If the city attorney would give an update on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had three closed-session items this evening. One for the Airport Authority, Item A, and two for the City Council. Item A and B were both existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1. The names of the parties to the litigation and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item number C was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D2. The facts and circumstances pertaining to that are set forth on the agenda. And at this time, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have the pledge and the invocation first. Invocation Minister Scott from Burning Bush Baptist is here. And followed by Sam Lucia, our police chief, will give the pledge. Scott?
Father God, we thank you this evening for this meeting as we come together. We thank you, Father, for each and every member here, each and every servant that is representing this county here this evening. Father God, we thank you for the city leaders, Father. We ask that you would bless them and keep them, Father God, as they administer to this city. Thank you, Father God, for all the work that they do. We thank you and bless you in Jesus' name.
Scott, thank you very much for taking time out of your schedule. Sam, thank you. We... The... City clerk, if you would present the agenda items and any revisions, if there are any, or any changes, or deletions, or corrections.
There are no revisions to tonight's agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. The first item is an appeal hearing, Item A1. Is this the appeal hearing that is going to be continued or not?
The public hearing, the following item, that is the one that's going to be continued.
This appeal hearing should go forward.
It should go forward, okay. Item A1, this is an appeal hearing. And so, we're going to ask the staff before we open and take it, any... To go, to explain what these items are?
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask Chris Borchert, Director of Development, to come forward to give a brief report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, this item is a location at 12370 Hesperia Road. They're proposing to replace their existing freestanding sign. And they're requesting to do that with the addition of a reader board sign on it. Reader board signs are prohibited right now in the code. However, there's a section in our code that allows them to ask for that... Ask for permission to do that through the Planning Commission. They went to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission recommended denial, four to zero.
So, they're going to replace an existing sign?
Yes.
Was the replacement for any other reason other than just the... To update it or go to this reader board kind of sign?
I believe it was mostly to add the reader board message so that they can advertise for their clients.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Borchert? No questions? Okay, do we have the appellate who wants to address the council at this time? Do we have any information, Madam Clerk, from the appellate?
No, we do not.
Email, writ, nothing, nothing, okay. It is a staff recommendation then to proceed and to uphold the Planning Commission's decision? It was, okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is the staff's recommendation.
Counsel? Motion.
Motion by Mr. McAcoran, second by Mr. Kennedy.
So, I'm clear. A yes vote means we're upholding the Planning Commission.
That's my understanding, yes.
That's correct.
That is correct. Denying the appeal.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is the general item is a public hearing. And that public hearing item is a request to continue the public hearing. And so, when a public hearing is continued, this hasn't been opened, so I will open the public hearing. It will... We will then take any testimony that we have on the item. But we will continue without closing the hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's the request?
November 18.
Staff recommendation? Any questions of staff? If not, I will open the hearing. And this is ordinance number 2322, Code Amendment. Well, just for the record, what does the Code Amendment relate to, staff, shortly?
This is related to landscaping standards.
Okay. Does anyone want to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'm going to continue the public hearing and not close it. But the next time, and this will be to the next regular meeting, or?
November 18.
November 18? Do we need a motion? Or is this action of the chair?
It could be an action of the chair.
Okay. If there's no further questions, we will continue public hearing on November 18. It'll be on the agenda. We will continue with the public hearing, and individuals will be able to speak at that time. Next item is the consent item. I have a card. So, Item C4 is one of the consent. Normally, we have these 10 items approved with one motion. Mr. Harriman has a card that says he may wish to testify on Item C4, maybe. If you want to, we'll pull this off, and you can address it, or if we go ahead and approve it, then you lose your right to speak on it. Do you want to speak on Item C4? Okay, one second. Because this is going to be... Has some... Because this will have some dialogue or discussion, can... We have a motion to approve all the items with the exception of C4 under the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Vias, second by Mr. Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item C4, you now come up, Mr. Harriman, as a request of the City Council to adopt ordinance number 2325 entitled in ordinance of the City Council, City Vicodilla, Amendment Section 2.28170A and C and 2.28260 of Chapter 2.28. This code ensuring compliance with state prevailing wage laws for public work projects exceeding the cost thresholds. The reason that I'm reading that is because the City Council, as a charter city, recently has been told that the state law was changed, and the state's now going to govern the prevailing wage. It will apply to charter cities, and we have no choice but complying with the state law. Go ahead.
Excuse me. Am I able to ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Since it's on the agenda? I'm curious as to what the threshold was, but is that the state's going to eliminate the threshold?
Can't answer that.
The threshold is $25,000 when it's for construction work and $15,000 when it's for alteration, demolition, repair, or maintenance.
And is that being eliminated?
No, that's being added by the state. Currently, as a charter city, we wouldn't have to follow prevailing wage if we chose not to for any local project.
So, we're bringing it to a threshold?
Yes.
A low threshold?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm happy about that.
Okay. Now, we have Item C4. We need a motion and second to approve it. Or to take whatever action council deems appropriate.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
E1. Written communications? Wait a minute, I've got to find it. Presentation of a request to approve pickup purchase of Craftco PN44100 Supershot 250D crack seal machine.
Motion by Ms. Vias, second by Ms. Garcia.
Item 2, presentation of a request to approve the purchase of...
Excuse me, Councilmember Garcia, may I get a vote from you on that item? Is it a yes vote? I can enter it for you. Oh, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Just for the record, I saw it. She had voted, so something didn't get picked up.
It popped up, finally.
Item number 2, presentation of a request to approve the purchase of two 2015 Jeep Wrangler Sports four-door 4x4 right-hand drive vehicles. No questions of staff? We have a motion and a second?
Motion by Ms. Vias, second by Mr. Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 3, request to approve award for an annual general service services provider standard agreement for the supply of street sweeper brooms. Thirty-three thousand.
Motion by Ms. Vias, second by Ms. Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 4, employment contract for Mr. Chris Borchert's employment contract submitted by my city manager with a recommendation to approve. Any questions?
I have a question. Did we do comparables?
We didn't do comparables with other cities. It's based on comparables within our city for department heads, based on the duties as well as experience.
The reason why I ask is because I noticed that the salary was 130, and that's pretty low for that type of department head for the city this large. So, I guess that will come when you do the salary survey?
Exactly, yeah. Once we get through the salary survey, some of those adjustments may occur. All of our department heads are probably lower than most of the surrounding cities at this point in time. That happened when we did the 10% furlough every Friday off. Department heads gave up 10% of their pay as well. It's actually made it difficult to recruit at times. As a result, people don't understand the difference.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. I think I'll make it now. In recent months, I have heard, and it's just anecdotal evidence, it's individual stories, it's not scientific, it's not a survey of any kind, but I've heard, and I believe, our planning department has developed a reputation for being one of the more difficult, maybe the most difficult, planning departments to deal with, and in many ways, the most unfriendly. I am concerned about that. I think we have a number of issues we'll be addressing in this next year. But I am looking forward to seeing some of that reputation changed under Mr. Borchert's leadership.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah. I would like to see it changed under his leadership, but that I don't want him to be a doormat for the developers either. So, I do expect the city to be properly cared for and our standards to increase. So, that's... If you get a yes vote from me, that's what I expect.
Okay. Comments or questions?
In other words, balance?
I would agree with that. Balance.
Increase standards. And lot sizes.
We don't say that word anymore.
I think it goes without saying that we're here to help. But on the other hand, we're not here to be a doormat for individuals who simply want to do what they want to do without any government interference at all. So, it does require a balance, and it's a tough job, so... But, you know, the city manager sits down with the department head, he gets... They get their direction from him, and he gets the direction from us, and we kind of get it from the general public. So, I think we're all involved in how we want the city to eventually turn out, so...
And that's kind of why I wanted to say that now, because Mr. Borchert doesn't work for us. He works for the city manager.
Exactly.
And... He takes his direction there.
Okay. With no further comments, we have a request to ratify, I guess.
Motion by Mr. McAcoran, second by Ms. Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 5, approval of Amendment Number 2 to the General Service Provider Agreement for General Pump Company for Waterwell Maintenance and Repair. Any questions of staff? If not? Got a motion?
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Vias.
Item 6, Vicodilla Water District is requesting additional appropriations in the amount of $122,000 for the High Desert Power Project Contract Services account. Exactly what does that mean? If Mr. McGlade, is he down here or someone?
He is not, actually. I see Doug Matthews on his way to the podium to explain this item.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is just basically a budget transfer. If you look at the staff report and the backup material, we had budgeted for the High Desert Power Project wells an amount over $100,000 for the year. They had an emergency repair, so we used that money. This is to get money back in the coffers so we can take care of the wells during the year. And High Desert Power Project will pay the money back. So, it's in the contract, it's attached, that they're required to pay this money back.
I think that was important. I wanted that to be on the record for you to indicate that he was really paid for. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, all our costs for HDPP are reimbursed.
That's water, everything we do.
Motion by Mr. McAcoran, second by Ms. Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
At this time, we are in Section E1. Public comments of interest to the public. I have one card. Mr. Jerry Laws. Laws, you can come forward and make your comments. Oh, and Robert Harriman will be second. I'm sorry, I thought it was... You are first, sir, and you have three minutes. You have three minutes, Mr. Laws.
Yeah.
You have three minutes, Mr. Laws.
We can talk back and forth.
All right. Don't see a big crowd here tonight. Well, that's all right. Your seats are probably filled with a bunch of angels wondering what's going to go on. All right, my name's Jerry Laws. I ran for State of Salmon. Didn't win, but had a lot of fun. While I was gone, I came back and found my car, my little truck, molested. Now, I'm getting a little tired of seeing all this going on. I don't know what we can do about it, but we need to do something about it. So, now, I have to lock it behind the gate and take my van out sometimes when it gets far darker, whatever. I appreciate that. We've got a crime problem in this whole area up here, I see. Now, we can't put a sheriff deputy at everybody's house, but we can sure support the right to keep bare arms. Pardon me. The right to keep bare arms. I want open carry in the county, and I want open carry in the cities. We don't have enough sheriffs, and the sheriff... Our sheriff that I voted for this last time around, who won, knows the only reason he exists is because we hung our Kentucky rifles on the fireplace and hired ourselves a sheriff. They can be disbanded anytime. So, we need protection of the citizen up here, and the right to keep bare arms, very simply, is no infringement, period. Offensive against it. I'll get my new bottom teeth after I pay off my last two payments on my running for State of Salmon. Now, look. Go to U.S. Code Title 10, Section 311. They'll give you a history of militia when it came from England, the United States. Then go to DIC Act, that's probably the one you should go to first. DIC Act of 1902. DIC Act of 1902. That'll be very self-explanatory when we're backing up the right to keep bare arms. So, and by the way, I did talk to this fine young lady here. Did the housing thing pass, or it didn't pass, right, to make the lots larger? Is that correct?
Not yet.
It did or didn't?
It didn't. They were postponing it for a later time.
I see. Well, you know, people are going to need a little larger area out here to plant their food in. And on the love good, or living good, he's starting to think a little bit about the mine out here in Calico. In Neal County, use their gold and silver mine to pay their county bills for over nine years at least. Use ours, don't mess with the town. It's a historical thing, but it's the number one mine. And so, we want to think about that. You want to put a little pressure on him. Use that gold and silver mine. We don't have to sell it overseas necessarily. We can't make coins, but we can make blocks and store them in case the federal government fails, which it's certainly working on. But we don't want... But here, the local government is the most important government, is the closest to the people, as you all know that. Now, I'm going to ask you a question. I asked Jim, Mr. Kennedy, are you running for reelection? Are you allowed to answer that?
I am.
It's called free speech, okay? Hold on for a minute. Are you running for reelection? That's all your signs are, right? I want to know in the City Council, how many votes...
Laws, your time is up.
Hold on, hold on. I want to hold... Well, I've got a couple more questions.
Well, you... I'm going to cut you out.
Well, you just give me a half a minute longer, okay? Like I get on radio. I want... Well, I'll talk to you after if I get a chance. Anybody who voted the signs, get rid of the signs, these camera cans? Get rid of them. They're completely unconstitutional. All right, we covered daddy press, Ebola at the airport. The United States has six places they can take these people when they come in from the country and take them, take care of them, okay? And then, we asked the housing one, and I want you to start increasing the time since there's not that many people here, on someone to speak, all right? Now, I want you to raise your hands and tell me who's running for reelection. Anybody here running for reelection? Are we allowed to do that?
Nope.
Nope?
Your time is up. You asked for 30 seconds, we gave you that.
Well, that was very kind of you, and you can catch me on TV later, all right? All right. Right to keep bare arms shall not be infringed, folks. Anybody who votes against us has broke their oath to God, family, country, and the Constitution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Harriman?
I'm going to be simple.
You don't have to be simple, but you've taken a short period of time, we would appreciate it.
I want to talk about code enforcement a bit. Now, I wasn't aware until today that I guess we've hired three new code enforcement officers. And I don't see them on the weekend. Now, I'm not sure if they're off on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday like the rest of the city is, but I find that 90% of the breaches in our... People breaching our city ordinances residentially are occurring on the weekends. Yard sales, yard sales. These people are leaving their yard sale signs on all the corners, and they never retrieve them. They're very trashy looking. Secondly, they're running a business. They're doing this every weekend, every other weekend. If I understand correctly, you're allowed to have two a year, and after that, you need a permit? And nobody's doing...
Staff will answer later in regard to that.
Okay. And nobody's... Nobody's... None of them people are doing that. So, I would ask that code enforcement maybe had a better presence on the weekend so we can control that. These people are selling things every other weekend, some, not all of them. And then, they don't load them up and put them in their garage. They leave them on the side of the house in front, on the driveway, because they're going to continue to do this. And so, I think that this is one of the things that code enforcement can help with over the weekend. That's it. Nicely simple.
Thank you very much. If there is questions or information, their staff will answer that for you later. Thank you, Robert. We have some more cards coming? Okay? Margaret Howe? No, sorry, sorry. If you'll come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I actually wasn't planning on speaking at all tonight. I wanted to speak to Captain Lucia maybe sometime, but the gentleman that was just up here spoke on exactly what one of my main concerns for the city is. And again, not necessarily wanting or needing, feeling the need to speak to you, but since he brought it up, I'm going to show you... I've brought with me... I was going to show the captain, not you guys, but I have brought with me a few of 34 photographs that I've taken in the last four to six weeks of yard sale signs, which I'm going to tell you flat out, I ripped down. Semi-trailers parked on residential streets right behind my house, where I don't appreciate hearing, leaving at 4:00 a.m. and rolling in at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night. These are people from best I can tell that live in the development south of Mesa Linda off of Eucalyptus. And they come off 395, and they park right down on my corner, Eucalyptus and Mesa Lindas... Mesa Linda. and Mesa Lindas, Mesa Linda. I don't think that's acceptable. I don't think it's lawful, and I'm not liking it very well, because I picked where I live to have peace and serenity. Of course, you know, because that's open at the 395, that's out the door now. But I do, I did bring photos with license plates and a nice little picture of a whole bunch of yard sale signs laid out in my driveway. And, and I am in contact with, with code enforcement. In fact, I spoke with someone there yesterday, and they informed me of, of new employees onboard. And, and I agree wholeheartedly with what this gentleman said. These people know, these people know that code enforcement is not available on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, what have I done? I've burdened the sheriff's department, who have more pressing concerns than my yard sale signs, but I'm so angered and so annoyed by the mess that the neighborhood has turned into. That's what I'm down to, is calling the sheriff's department, saying, hey, can you come take this 26-foot boat on a trailer that's been sitting for weeks on Mesa Linda? Can you do something about that, please? Can you do something about the yard sale signs? I know code enforcement isn't there. Can you do something about the semi-trailers? So, I'm at my wit's end, because I want to see Victorville restored to the nice bedroom community it once was. Now, deep down in my heart, I know that's probably never going to happen, much to my dismay, but I feel like we do need to get a strong grip on addressing these issues. I really do. It's affecting the quality of life. I've lived here 16 years, and I'm stuck here, and I'm not happy about it, and these are the reasons why I'm not happy about it. I don't like calling the PD when they have priority calls, and I know that, to address these concerns, but I'm not going to just turn my head and pretend like I don't see them anymore. So, I don't know if you guys would like-
Yes, if you will just hand those to the clerk, please.
Yes, and that's, that's pretty much it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we have your card, so we have the address, we have questions, someone will get back to you. Mr. Robert Wick?
Thank you. What I'd like to bring up here is that the first problem that's been way overlooked is the fact that at the, at the beginning of the wall there, I call it Great Wall of Victorville, right there at Olivia and Amerosa, there has been no gate put up that was promised to us to keep the people out. At 12:30, 1:00 in the morning, cars are coming in, whatever they're doing, I don't know, but my dogs go off, they bark aloud, alert us to the problem, and go out there and look, and sure enough, we got cars turning around in there, whether they're doing drugs or whatever. They shouldn't be in there. And we're talking about a quick fix, maybe $200 for a couple poles and a cable with a sign that says, "Keep out," that they can't break. I've talked to the general city manager, city supervisor about doing it myself. Well, I'm not a contractor, so I can't do it. I have the material in my backyard. That's the first problem. The second problem that I've been, that we've already brought to you, is excess water. My backyard is at the lowest spot behind the Great Wall of Victorville there, and when it rains this winter, it is going to fill up, and we were already promised by the city that you would come in and grade it so the water would run north out to Olivia, where they already did a partial ditch. Nobody's done nothing about it yet, and it's getting closer to the winter. So, I'd like to see that these two items, and when, when I left tonight, I noticed, looked out the back window of my house, I had a car sitting in that alley. I didn't go out and say anything to him or anything, but there he is. The cop, your police force has been up, looked at it, I told them about it. He said he would look into it and notify you guys that we do have a major problem with people coming up behind the wall all along there, not to mention the valuable stuff that I have, and that's what I'm really, really concerned about, and everybody else, you know? We need to get that closed off. It's a very simple, very simple fix. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure that the city clerk will transcribe that right, submit it to the manager, will hear back in regard to the issues, what's behind them, what the city's responsibility is, and if we ought to take an action, be sure and notify the individuals that took time to come here and share with the city. I have no more cards, and so therefore, we're going to go from E1 to E2, reports from the city manager. Doug?
I had a short list until public comments started. The gentleman who just spoke, I see the city engineer, Brian Gangler, is already out speaking with him. That's what I was going to recommend, so Brian can get all those, both of those issues resolved, that both of those are engineering issues. Regarding code enforcement, we actually do have code enforcement officers out on Fridays and Saturdays, and the three that we hired are in training. In fact, I don't know if the third one has even quite started yet. He was going through some processing, so it's going to take a little bit of time to get them trained, but that'll increase our presence, which was the direction of the city council. Yard sale signs and trucks being parked, those are exactly the types of things that was part of that strategic planning session that we had, that the reason why we're hiring more officers is to take care of those things, so... I do know that, that the code enforcement officers work on Fridays and Saturdays, because I tried to recruit them to come and run in the heritage games with me on Saturday out at Maverick Stadium, where the city got second place, but some of them couldn't make it because they were working on that Saturday, so I'm well aware of that. So, but I did want to make that one of my announcements, the city employees ran in that, had a good time. I'm still sore as a result, but we did take second place in the corporate challenge, so I'm proud of our, our staff for that. Yesterday, two council members, two planning commissioners, the BIA, and actually, Mr. Harriman, representing the public, met in, as a focus group that we talked about a month or so ago, and had a very productive meeting regarding development standards and some design changes that are going to be coming to the planning commission relatively soon. There's a few follow-up items, but I think everyone at the meeting thought that it went better than we expected it to, so we're happy about that. Another follow-up item, I know that the council, some council members have had concerns or questions about the class and comp study. We actually are finally able to have the appeals process for the employees next week. It's going to be Monday and Tuesday, so that should be coming back in the relatively near future as well. We had a little bit of trouble because the surrounding cities didn't really want to provide a HR professional, because all of our staffs know each other, and they thought it would be a conflict, or at least have some awkwardness to it, so... Two other things quickly. Saturday was a busy day for Victorville. We also had a low-cost licensed clinic on Saturday that was very well-attended. There were people in line at 6:00 in the morning. We gave out 240 shots, signed up 62 new dog licenses and 107 renewals, so that was successful. Looking forward to doing that again. My last announcement is in response to one of our public commenters, but he's, he's already gone, but in case the council had any concern about what's more a federal issue, SCLA, our airport, is not one of the six airports that is bringing, that the federal government will bring Ebola patients to, so we can be rest assured that that's not a Victorville issue.
Okay. Any questions? Doug? Thank you, Doug. Council members, any reports from the council members? We'll start on my left. Gloria?
Yes, I do have something this time. On Thursday, October the 16th, I attended the Victor Valley Global Hospital's second anniversary. It was amazing what the group KPC Global have accomplished in the two years since they took over the hospital. They have increased emergency department visits, number of admissions, number of outpatient visits, number of outpatient surgeries, and number of inpatient surgeries. I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers, but they did not provide those to me. And not only did they save the hospital, but they saved jobs. Presently, they employ 524 full-time employees, 45 part-time employees, 109 per diem employees, for a total of 678. Doctors are not included in these totals. I think that is magnificent, and, and I think they're doing a great job, and I really do praise them for all their accomplishments.
Hey, thank you, Council. Mr. Kachman? Ms. Vias?
I just wanted to say, are we going to have code enforcement on Sundays?
I don't think we have shifts drawn up just yet, but if there's a need, we certainly can, can make those adjustments.
And when people call for code enforcement right now, do they get a live person on the weekends, on Friday?
On the weekends? I actually couldn't answer that.
Why, why couldn't the phone ring over to their cell phones?
We can work on some way to either use, because we have other answering services for animal control. We may be able to partner with, within departments to, to provide that.
Okay. And then also, I just wanted to say, I've been visiting larger stores in Victorville, and they're still a mess. I was at Winco today, and I had to trample through trash and just garbage, and so that's Winco, that's Stater Brothers, the 99-cent stores, and Walmart. And I was wondering, what is code enforcement doing about the large stores?
Typically, if it's a parking lot issue, they make a phone call, and the stores, in the past at least, have been very quick to, to address the issue if it's inside the store.
They didn't have to babysit them. They should have it cleaned automatically every single day. It should be cleaned. We shouldn't have to use our staff to patrol them, so if we go out there and we see it dirty, we need to cite them. Otherwise, they're never going to stop.
Yeah, I don't know if, if we have a code section that would allow us to just simply cite them, but we'll certainly reach out to those stores.
And maybe we could amend something so that we can have a little more teeth in what we're doing here to clean up the city.
Mr. Kennedy?
No, I don't have anything.
I continue to read the articles in the daily press about our efforts to try to clean up the city and change the image. It seems to me that, by the way, he writes great articles, but almost every person that I talk to points out that it's looking better, but we need to do more, and we do, and we're going to keep at this. We want this city to be, you know, I want everyone who lives here to be proud to live in the city and not be ashamed when you have company that there's the perpetual yard sign next door, down the street, and junk cars, and boats parked across the driveway, and trucks, and so on. And I know that code enforcement started lightly, because they were trying to get the word out that we're going to enforce, but, boy, I think they have public support and council support start issuing the citations, Doug. People have to pay a fine. Maybe they'll learn by doing that. Hate to do it. I hate government trying to tell people how to lead their lives, but their rights stop where my nose begins, and, and the other neighbors, we're, we're getting calls all the time about people who are simply ignoring not only the rules, but the etiquette of being a good citizen, so it's time to issue the citations. We have no more business coming to this council. Thank you all for attending this meeting tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.